I'm going to call the Charlottesville City Council August 4th, 2025 meeting to order. Brian Kingston will not be here and I think Michael will be joining us if he's he's not here yet. I suspect Michael to be here. Is there a motion to approve or amend the agenda?
Second.
Okay, second. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes, and no oppositions. This meeting would be divided into three sections. The first will be a joint session with the Charlottesville City School Board, followed by City Council closed meeting and then we'll have our regular business meeting at six thirty. This is a joint meeting with the school board. Madam Chaperson, would you like to call roll?
Yes, go ahead and call our school board meeting, our joint session to order in Stafford. Helpful, please. And Harry Barnes.
Here.
Ms. Lee. Here. Ms. Lamond.
Here.
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 Yes, thank you.
And we also need to approve our agenda of one item. Is there a motion to do so?
So.
And second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Barnes with the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. I now turn it over to City Manager Sanders.
Good evening, Council, members of the school board, members of the public. To, I guess this afternoon, our planned conversation for this joint meeting is regarding school facilities, buildings specifically. This was part of an ongoing conversation that Dr. Gurley and I have been having, but in addition, I shared, I believe it was the joint meeting prior to the, prior to this one, where I referenced that it was probably necessary for us to begin having some further conversation about the long-term projections on managing school facilities. So before we would go too far down that road, I thought it was important for us to figure out a way to have a joint session where we could at least just get an update as to how we look at our school buildings today. What are the conditions of those? We have team members who are responsible for managing these buildings, but ideally it'd be best for us to ensure that both bodies receive this information at the same time with as much detail as we could possibly provide for where we are today and where we project possibly being in the next few years. So this evening, Mike Goddard and James Reese are going to be walking you through that particular analysis and I think Ms. Powell is also going to be speaking as well. And the intent for council specifically is this is a step ahead of your council retreat that is coming up on the fifteenth and sixteenth. In that retreat, we'll be prioritizing the discussion around housing, schools, and transportation. Pointing out to you, of course, that my job is always to remind you of choices that you have to make and the discipline that comes with spending money that we have because those resources, while they keep growing, are still limited. And ideally, what we want to make sure of is that you're as informed as possible when making these various decisions that you have to make in your respective roles. So I'll turn it over to the gentleman and allow them to take us through what they have prepared for us this evening.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Sam. Good evening, Mayor Wade, members of council, members of the school board. My name is James Freese. I am Deputy City Manager for Operations. And am I advanced in this category? Not sure I have the control. Thank you. If we go ahead and go to the next slide. So the City Manager Sanders mentioned, our goal for the night is to provide you all with a high-level review of the status of our school facilities. To that end, we are going to, after brief introduction, talk about school enrollment and capacity. We're going to do a review of each of our existing school buildings and provide an update on the status of the middle school. Slide please, Kim. So while generally speaking, our school buildings are in good condition, they are all old. So we, when we look at our schools, we actually think of them in the set of pairs. We call them the twins. The first of these, the vintage era, if you will, Trailblazer and Summit represent a period of time where we were using more classical designs, so think columns and large windows. Then we have the middle era, which were represented by Sunrise and Tall Oaks, built in the fifties. These school buildings, we think of them as kind of good, solid school buildings. They, they do the job, they are, and they are in good condition. And then finally, from the sixties, we have Greenbrier and Jackson Villa, which are our open floor plan era of schools, right? So these are marked by, obviously, the open floor plan style, but also small windows. Generally, these school buildings are more complex in their layout and have a range of other challenges associated with them. And then, other than our brand-new middle school, Charlottesville High School is our newest school building in the portfolio, built for us in nineteen seventy-five. So. So our review, as we looked at the school buildings, considered three basic factors. First off was just straight-up building condition. What is, what is the condition of these buildings just as built as alone? Generally, as I noted, they've been, we maintain these school buildings in good condition. We complete periodic assessments and plan for their maintenance over time. The second issue we looked at was capacity relative to school enrollment. What does our school population look like going forward? And are we looking at capacity constraints that we are going to need to plan for? And then the final thing we looked at was really the ability of these school buildings as they exist today to meet modern education expectations. Basically, what are we looking for in a school building today? And how do these school buildings compare to those needs? One second, Kim. Almost there. So in, in the, on this issue of modernizing our schools, we've been taking kind of a quick-hit approach, right? Where we have about a million dollars a year that we dedicate towards discrete projects that can be completed over the course of roughly one summer. One of the questions really before you tonight is whether we continue that approach or whether we look at a more holistic approach of considering school buildings as a whole, looking at the whole building and looking at improvements, doing improvements all at once, whether that's a deep renovation, renovation plus an addition, or considering redevelopment of the whole brawl school building. If we were to move towards that school-by-school upgrades or school improvement program, our next step in this process would be to do a deeper dive into each and every school, do an assessment of what that school would need, what are those gaps between what are we looking for in a school and where that school is today, so that we can develop school-by-school cost estimates and then build that into a financial and construction plan that might then stretch over a five, ten, or even twenty-year period of time. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn things over to Ms. Powell, who's going to talk to us about enrollment and capacity of the schools.
Thank you, James. Good evening. I'm Kim Powell, the Chief Operations Officer with the City Schools, and we can advance to the next slide. Thank you. I know this is a bit of an eye chart with a lot of numbers on it, but this is what the numbers are really important for, is enrollment and capacity. And the key takeaways when you look at all these numbers is really there isn't like an imminent capacity issue with our schools. We did have an extended period of pretty brisk growth back around twenty-ten, eleven, twelve. We were on an upward trajectory that was concerning to us and we partnered with Weldon Cooper to figure out what was causing it. It was actually the high-rise UVA student housing that went up on West Main. As college students moved into that housing, it freed up quite a bit of family, single-family home stock in the city. And unexpectedly, we experienced a fairly sustained growth surge for some time. The growth we experienced during that time took a little dip during COVID, which happened with almost every public school division across the Commonwealth. But then, after, as we came out of COVID and returned to in-person, in-person learning, our enrollment pretty much destabilized at where it was pre-pandemic. And that's sort of where we're riding right now with a little bit of a downward trend that we can foresee because of the reduction in birth rates. I can tell you that, you hear it if you Google what's going on with birth rates in this nation. It's, it's, you can see lots of charts. I thought about bringing one into this presentation, but decided not to. But if you choose to look at such things, you'll see that that declining birth rate trend is real and Charlottesville's not excluded from that. So what will make a difference for us, or what we as city schools know that we have to monitor carefully in the face of that birth rate trend, is what's going on with housing developments and particularly affordable housing that would be attractive for families. That's what will change things, would change the outlook with our school capacity. When it comes to school capacity, and this is getting a little bit more into the weeds, the functional and max capacity numbers that you see there, functional capacity, and I'll apologize to the VMDO folks around the room if I butcher this definition, but it's, it's really where you're operating in what feels like a full school, but you have the space to react to changes. We like to say, unfortunately, the kids never show up in nice little bundles of twenty-four to put them in the classrooms the way you need to. So sometimes you have to add a classroom for a particular grade level or for a particular subject. And when you're operating, as you're approaching functional capacity, you're starting to run out of options to, to address those needs as they arrive. Max capacity is getting into more of the hardcore, like, fire marshal-type numbers. That's a place you just don't want to be in. You're needing to typically add modular units or take some kind of action before you really get to max capacity because it becomes extremely difficult to manage your programs in the building. You want to stay at, or ideally below, eighty percent of functional capacity to have the ability to maneuver and operate a typical school without really feeling those pinch points in a serious, in a serious way. And so what the table shows you here is that the team, City Facilities Team, asked us to look at Rockton out to twenty thirty and we've been working with a consulting firm, Walpert, helped us with the rezoning, the elementary rezoning process that we undertook this past year because we recognize that within our ten-square miles, we have to be super mindful of where the housing developments are coming because some of our schools really don't have room to expand. If you're in a locality that has more green space, a lot of times, just the typical first move is you drop modulators and then you figure it out, right? We, the school zone that has the most development targeted to it is the school zone where dropping modulators is absolutely not an option. And there's not even really a viable option for expansion. I wish that included the word viable in the closing bullet down there because the, you'll see later in the deck that when it comes to Summit, the only thing we could come up with if we had to expand capacity there would be to take the little parking square in the back of the school and build a parking structure in that square with classrooms integrated. And you still wouldn't get that many classrooms. And then what that does is the entire inside of that building, all those beautiful large interior windows are looking at a parking garage. So I don't really feel like there's, that's a viable expansion option. So there's some hard limits at Summit. But for purposes of today's conversation, just know that capacity, we are being proactive, working with this firm that helped with the initial rezoning because now when we do enrollment projections, we're bringing in a geolocation factor into the, into it so we can really keep track of what's happening where with the developments. We're in a close conversation with CRJ and with Piedmont, who are the driving forces behind a lot of the development that's going to potentially have, to get impacts on our enrollments. And it's just something that we have to keep tabs on and it's not enough to keep tabs on it holistically, especially at the elementary level. We've got to do it zone by zone. But we feel that the, the board and the whole team, I think, did a lot of great proactive work to reach out to the community, educate them about what's going on and try to get ahead of what's already in progress or approved, but maybe not yet broken ground so that we can not be in a reactionary position, in particular at Summit.
Good evening. I'm Mike Goddard, Deputy Director, Public Works. Been working on some of these school's projects for a long time, so I'll, I'll present to you kind of some of the common issues and an overview, kind of a path forward. I should mention as well that VMDO Architects is here tonight to give an update on the K Center project as well. So it dents a lot through these days, so I'm going to try and move for you. A few gentle notes, though. So let's look at our, our, our facilities holistically was, as Kim mentioned, the capacity study work we did in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. A lot's changed since then. We had a particular lens. We were that, that information we gathered is still useful today, but I think it's also, we have extended interest now. I would say that it is important to point out before I get into this, a lot of specific information here that we're not making a specific proposal with this slide deck. We're kind of taking bits and pieces of things that we feel like might be needed, but this is meant to be the opening of the conversation. It's not supposed to give you an exact, you know, Sego and we can do exactly what's on these slides. And I think it's important that I point out the Walker conversations happening because some of what we're talking about here could be facilitated by some of the stuff that the MDO team is going to show you with the Walker presentation. So when James says that heretofore, we've been attacking these appropriateness issues with smaller interventions over the course of the summer, that's a little bit problematic because a summer is a very short window of time. I would say that you'll see through the presentation of the different projects we've done and what we've been calling our modernization program, that, though it does make a part of a school nice, it is not the whole school by any stretch. So I'll jump into some of the common issues we're seeing in our schools. Bathrooms are a big concern. In a lot of cases, they're outdated. In a lot of cases, they are not up to current ADA standards, so that's an important thing. Also, there's concern about gender, who uses what restroom. We, in the new middle school project, we've gone genderless restrooms. So one restroom, one person, doesn't matter your gender. We also did a, a project that I'll show you in a minute out at Charlottesville High School, had a similar approach. It was very successful at Charlottesville High School, nothing but positive feedback from that, so that's one approach we could look at. Flooring. Flooring's a big issue because a school's large, right? So it doesn't seem like a lot to change out some flooring, but when you've got to do the entire floor in the summer, that's a challenge. So what ends up happening is these patchwork flooring projects. And then you end up with different types of floors and it's, it's just not the best way to, to tackle that. Also, carpeting in schools tends to be a disaster, so, and there's some of it out there still. Ceiling grids, you know, the ceiling grids are functional, they're doing their job, but they're outdated. And I think when you walk into a school, it's really surprising how important the impact of your ceilings and lighting are to your perception of that space. Our ceiling grids across the, the school system, we're working on it, but it's, they're not all there yet and CHS definitely has a lot of ceiling grid that needs going through. Lighting, our lighting is, you know, we've been moving through, making LED adjustments as we change out lighting through the schools, but again, it's something that is, it feels like maybe a more wholesale approach is required. And then down at the bottom, there aren't pictures for these things because it's not something you take a lot of pictures of, but our mechanical and electrical and plumbing, these are big-ticket items, you know? The, we've been going through the schools, trying to update the switchgear for the electrical systems. It's very costly, it's very time-consuming. Our plumbing systems, you know, some of the schools have old iron pipes underneath them, so it's not as simple as changing out a toilet if you want a toilet to work better. You have to go all the way down the line and out to the street, and those are challenging things to take care of in a summer. And mechanical systems, you know, we want to have modern, efficient mechanical systems. And in a lot of cases, we do not, simply put. We'll do the next slide, please. So I'll go school by school and kind of talk about the, the condition of each school. Each of these slides will be laid out similarly. In the upper left, we'll have some basic information about some projects we've completed, some projects that we need to complete. In the lower left, you'll see what was suggested by our capacity study work in twenty sixteen and seventeen. Those numbers aren't picked up anywhere else in the grand scheme of things, they're just there for your information. And then some talk about suitability, what the positives and negatives of each school and its site are. So Greenbrier built in nineteen sixty-two. We've done some projects there over the years. I won't read through all of them, but we do have some major capital maintenance projects that are needed in the near future. Windows, roof will be coming up, HVAC overhaul, generator replacement, fire alarm panel, and then flooring and saying some bathrooms. And I think this is one where the No cafeteria. The auditorium is undersized. Do I need to be in stereo? Right. The music class space is small. There's insufficient specialist instruction space. And there's no way to add a visitor vestibule. That's something that's been priority for the schools, to add a visitor vestibule at each of the schools. This one is nearly impossible based on how this school is laid out. Take the next slide, please. Jackson Villa Elementary, you'll see some similar things here. We've done some projects over the years. We did the fourth-grade modernization downstairs, which you'll see in a minute. But we have some big issues here, too. Roofing, which is on schedule to be done in a couple of years. It needs an HVAC overhaul and we need to replace building ceilings. Lower left, you'll see some suggestions for how we had planned to expand the school in our last go-around. Suitability of the school, it's got a lot of land, that's good. It has two internal courtyards, which are very nice. It has no kitchen or cafeteria, though, and natural light for the classrooms is minimal. It's got those slot windows, so each classroom has a little window about this wide and that's what lets natural light into the classroom. I can't speak for what people were thinking back in the day, but kids are like plants, they eat light. And there's no outdoor covered play space. Next slide, please. Summit Elementary, this is one of our oldest schools, but ironically, I think it's one of the best. Constructed in nineteen thirty, there's been a lot of development over the years, major addition, for instance. Unfortunately, that major addition built floor plates that don't match up with the existing floor plates, so there are like half floors at the transition. Again, I don't know what they were thinking, but and this is one that Kim mentioned, has very little space for expansion. It's in need of a roof, it's in need of electrical switchgear replacement, an HVAC overhaul, and a modernized elevator. Suitability-wise, it has large classrooms and good natural light, so this, this building actually has what you would hope for in a modern classroom. Good-sized classes, lots of modern, modern, natural light. That's funny because it was built a hundred years ago, but what goes around, what, what's, everything's cyclical, right?
Yeah.
Stately building, it's a beautiful building, so, you know, we would never suggest doing anything with this. However, the traffic, parking issues in the neighborhood are tough. It is landlocked, it has very little space. As I mentioned, the different interior levels. I mean, the site conditions here are a wreck, so, you know, we would have to look very closely at what we wanted to do with this site. Next slide, please. Trailblazer Elementary, another of the old ones, and again, a beautiful and good-functioning school. A lot of the same things apply here. We would like to replace the generator and the transfer switch, do an HVAC overhaul, repair and replace the wood cornices and trim. In terms of suitability, again, it's, well, this one has a large auditorium, which is nice. There's a courtyard which we could use for something, maybe. A nice play field. Unfortunately, it has four different interior levels. Unfortunately, this is a common theme. For whatever reason, when people in the past have added on to schools, they don't care where the floors already are. They just put new floors and say, here's a staircase, which worked great when there weren't people with ADA issues. I guess that was the case in the old days. And then a lot of cut-through traffic through the site, which, you know, that's, that is what it is. But, you know, overall, a good school, good bones. Next slide, please. Sunrise Elementary, we've done some work here recently. We did a, a library renovation here a few years back. It had a roof replacement in two thousand and it will get another one in twenty twenty-seven. It had a security vestibule, vestibule addition, which is good. But in the future, we've got, like I said, the roofing membrane replacement, some slate roof repairs, HVAC overhaul, you're seeing a theme here, floor covering replacements. Suitability-wise, it has a, a nice library because we just did it. It has great solar orientation, which is a good thing, especially since we're trying to put solar on a lot of our schools and all of our new roofs are solar-ready. Adequate buildable land, so we could build an addition here or something else that we needed. Art room is inadequately sized, however. I-stem room has egress concerns, so it's down in the basement, it's hard to get in and out of there. And then there's two isolated lower levels, so there's a And then there's two isolated lower levels, so there's a lower floor level that aren't connected in the middle, they're just kind of separate out. Next slide, please. Tall Oaks, this one was known as Johnson, in case you're confused, I know I still am. This one has recently received a rooftop terrace, which is a nice addition, we just finished that one last summer. There was a library addition back in 94. It needs a roof, it needs Skylax replaced, it needs, once again, a major HVAC overhaul and a generator replacement. Its suitability, trails are nearby, that's good, it's connected to, to the neighborhood. Outdoor learning spaces are well-connected. Good, good amount of buildable land there, so if we wanted to do something, we could. And good natural light, so these middle era schools tend to have decent natural light. The media center could use an upgrade. Outdoor play space would be useful, it's covered. Multiple classrooms are undersized, this is a, a specific one for this school. And then there could be some more specialist instructional space. Next slide, please. Charlottesville High School, this is a big one. Constructed in 1975, it's a very large school, very spread out. We just did, as I mentioned, the B Commons restroom modernization, very successful project. Maybe a template for things we'd like to do in other schools. The new, the electrical distribution center system was just redone, we just finished that up. The roof replacement is just now finishing up, third phase, so we've all lived through three phases of roof replacement on CHS now. Because it's so big, everything costs a lot, because everything's a square foot multiplier in construction, so. When it comes to doing things like ceiling replacements, I mean, that's a long project, even if it's just that. So it has a new roof that's solar ready, great. Large library, excellent STEM lab, adequate buildable land, so this is a good site. You're comfortable about this school generally. However, the library could be updated, there's not much natural light in a lot of the classrooms for some reason. There are some acoustical challenges, sounds traveling between classrooms. And again, the sprawling layout just makes everything, security, projects, timeline, budget, a challenge. But we do have a lot of space. So you probably noticed a few themes through all of that. I did want to, you know, we've talked several times about our piecemeal approach to modernization. I want to go through what we've accomplished with that program since it was approved. First Summit, fourth grade classrooms in 2019, we- Feels like that was a different timeline, but we completed a renovation of the fourth grade wing. That was, I think, four classrooms is what we accomplished with a million dollars. That was the first one, it was the template. At the time, we were going with classroom modern, modernization, and we figured we could go through all the schools and do one grade at a time until we'd gotten old school dinner. What we're realizing is that here, now that we've gone through all of the elementary schools, it's going to take forever to get through all those schools and we still will never catch up. Jackson Via, fourth grade classrooms. We went to the basement and took their kind of worst classrooms and made them the most modern classrooms in the school. Very successful project. The Sunrise Media Center and STEM space, so we took their library and made it modern. We added a STEM space. It's, it's a really great, a great place to check out a book or to study science. Next slide, please. Then, based on our success there, we moved to Greenbrier and did another media center. Another very successful project. Tall Oaks, we did an outdoor terrace, so we took the roof of their gym, which was just a black EPDM roof membrane, and we added occupiable space there, modified the railings so you could access it on the stairways, and made it a place where you could do outdoor study. And then Charlottesville High School, B Commons Restrooms. This is a picture of our, of our restroom project there, we just finished this one up last year. And we're very pleased with this, I think it's, I think it is, it could be a template for a way that we could make restroom to work for everyone in the city schools. So this slide talks about costs. And I don't want anybody, I said it before, I want to be clear. This is not a specific project that we're proposing. This is kind of taking some things out of those buckets. You know, we took the required maintenance that you saw on each of those building slides, for instance, and, and put them in there. I put a number for bathroom renovations, so if we wanted to do the bathrooms in the school, there's a placeholder number and you'll see it's a nice round number. Anytime you see a round number in construction, you should be worried about the accuracy of that number. But there's a number there, and I think it's in the ballpark. Ceiling and flooring renovations, we took square footed numbers for replacing all the ceilings and floors in the school. And likewise, lighting renovations. Some of these things have already been, you know, penciled in as future projects. Some, most of them have not. But we just wanted to give you a sense of scale of what we're talking about. And the things that aren't in this, this package of numbers are things like natural lighting. There's not a dollar in here for increasing the size of a window, it only has a slot window. These are, these are basically, we did our best to take the school that we have now and not change really anything about that school, except that everything finish wise and impressions wise, as you walk into this school, is modernized and new. So this is, you see down the bottom a hundred million dollars. We're not talking about escalation costs, you know, what does this cost by the time we get there? How long does it take to, you know, get to the decision point? As James mentioned, we would want to do an in-depth study on each school and really lay out a capital program if this was something we were interested in inviting into. But I think the point here is just to say, here's a very basic approach we could take. And this is the number we came up with. Is this a conversation we want to have? So I'll close there with that, you know, I'm always here for questions. But I also thought it was important that I give an update on one of our big projects right now. You'll notice that on all of these slides, you don't see anything about Charlottesville Middle School, and you don't see anything about the pre-K center. That's because we have active projects on those two sites. And because of that, the schools are perfect. Not really, but I, I think you'll see that we're getting pretty close here. This is an update on Charlottesville Middle School, teachers moved in today. So we are, this is brand new information. So status on Charlottesville Middle School, as you'll remember if you've been following along, right now, we're at this moment where, you know, we're using the new buildings. So we built new buildings, now we're going to go back and renovate the old buildings. While we're renovating the old building, building A, we're occupying these brand new buildings. So I encourage everybody to try and get a look, because they are beautiful. This is the view from the playfield, looking up towards, on the right side of the screen, the gym building, and on the left side, the classroom buildings of the new Charlottesville Middle School. Next slide, please. This is what the restrooms look like, pretty much throughout Charlottesville Middle School. It's the same idea as the Charlottesville High School restrooms. One person, one restroom, doesn't matter your gender, plenty of ADA restrooms. This is a much better and easier to manage restroom facility, because it has eyes from the hallway. Here's the new gym, which I think is, when I stood in it, I was like, this is the most phenomenal gym in Charlottesville. Next slide, please. This is, we're very much still in construction, this was, you know, three days ago, which is ancient history. And a construction project, but these are the folks putting together the main grand stairway of the new middle school. And this little seating area, wooden seating area on the right there, where people can gather and take their time. Next slide, please. This is a typical classroom, I didn't select based on anything besides, I was walking by and I took a picture. So this is what an average classroom looks like. Very nice, good natural light, brand new furniture, brand new everything. Next slide, please. And this is the main entryway, so this is where, if you remember the old Buford, the staircase you're sticking on here would have been the old staircase you would have taken down to the admin offices. This is now enclosed space, it's the junction between the new buildings, which you see on the right of the image, and the old buildings, which are under construction on the left. So right now, all of the penetrations between that wall on the left are sealed up, and inside, people are absolutely ripping that building apart. If you go look at, I mean, there is precious little left, steel, that's about all that's surviving this thing. But it's all in the interest of making this a, a great learning environment. And I think, once you see it finally completed, it's going to be really something to behold. But we're happy that we're at this place where we've gotten the new building, constructed and occupiable. And I don't want to say the hard work is over, but that work is over. All right? Next slide, that's it? Okay. So I guess now would be a good time for any questions about this part, before we queue up B M D O to talk about our pre-K center.
Yes, I have some kind of questions and thoughts. Where I see where Greenbrier has, you know, last year had 234 students and Nick, I didn't think, and- Summit is at 300, so I, you know, and I know I'm not going to talk about every time when I was on council, but it was almost just the opposite of you, you know, 10 years or so ago. And that were, you know, you know, said, do we, this Clark, it's enough students there to keep it open. That's how few students that it was, there was like 120 or so students, it was really low. So I, you know, I'm just thinking what's happening here is Greenbrier, you know, you know, people like Lloyd and I don't live there, but you know, our kids are gone and we're still in the house, there's no, there's no kids there. But I guess in 10 years, you know, it could change. And what I did is did a quick add of the maximum capacity, and that's about 5300. And so it looks like we have a capacity of about 1,000 students or so, Kim, something like that, that we could grow with. Because what I was looking at is that new numbers, and it didn't include any like expansion. And, but I think that we have a fair amount of capacity. You know, we haven't seen how the zoning was going to play out and, you know, you know. Anyway, I'm just kind of, this, just thinking off the top of my head, that do we think we need capacity in the school, school future growth?
So I, I think what we're doing right now is a couple of things that people don't see. So part of the issue, and this came out during our conversation when we were rezoning. So in terms of the things that make us really successful, such as providing the interventions for students, sometimes that's happening in a closet. So it's the additional resource spaces that people are forgetting about. So yes, we have some areas where, we have some areas where the enrollment ticks up. But it's the other things that makes the student achievement work in terms of where we provide reading intervention, math intervention, and I can tell you in any, you can go in any school and it's happening in a hallway daily, it's happening in a bookroom daily. And so, yes, so do we need more room, is there, are there opportunities to expand? Absolutely, because those things shouldn't be happening in a bookroom. They shouldn't be happening in a hallway. But they absolutely do happen every single day, and when we open schools up next Wednesday, at every school, you'll see that happening. So I would say yes.
So Dr. Kupel, how is this going to look, I guess, in a few years when the fifth graders come back? Is that fact being here?
Yes, so we, we're going to do a, it's going to be an even swap. So we are moving out pre-K students and then the principals will work to reconfigure the building so that the fifth graders can come back in. But again, I just want to make sure that I'm plugging, that we keep, what we keep in front of us is that even once we reconfigure, even once we rezone, we still are going to have students who are receiving those additional services, what we call tier two. Well, tier two happens in the classroom largely. But those tier three interventions are happening in hallways, closets, and things of that nature.
I mean, I remember them taking place, two or three students in, in, in the cafeteria, you know? Different parts of the cafeteria, you know, pulling students out, so, yeah, yeah.
Mary Wade, if I, if I might, just, in, in the conversations we've been having, when we look at school population enrollment, we've looked at five years and to the best of our ability in terms of projections, projections are the best we can do. It doesn't look like we're going to see a substantial increase in school population to drive a need to do additions to schools for that reason. But as Dr. Gurley has pointed out, the, the, when we think about modernizing the school building, that's where you get into the need for breakout rooms for a variety of purposes, and the need to expand space for, for STEM uses, for media centers, for technology. And that's where we start to think about the need for additions and that kind of space. I think one of the things we're hoping to get from all of you tonight is your reaction to the status of the school buildings as they are today relative to these issues, particularly to that issue of modernization. And, and I'm going to, obviously, on the numbers that Mike gave, I kind of see those, this might draw a gasp, as kind of a floor. Because that is, in some respects, what he shared is kind of the minimum interventions necessary just to, to, to bring the school buildings up to a good condition and make them look nice and attractive and invite an older, positive things. But when you start rolling in these aspects of modernization, and the, the additional space we might need to accomplish that, that's when, that's when it really gets expensive. And that's the kind of stuff we would uncover going to school by school.
Yeah, I would get council to chime in. Natalie, you have any thoughts, you're CJ's grad.
Question first, you mentioned that for functional capacity, you said- You mentioned that for functional capacity is calculated at about, sorry, best fit is 80% or below for of functional capacity. How is functional capacity calculated?
So for that, I would need to defer to the people, such as the B M D O folks who are in the room. I don't know if they maybe could speak to that when they're at the podium, because we actually depended on them to determine, to set those targets. So I just, I don't want to listen.
Can we give a shot?
There we go.
Sorry, Rob Winston, I'm the principal of B M D O, and I'll be R J Walmar.
We just need you in the microphone for the people at home.
Okay. So typically, what we see, Virginia Department of Education has a formula essentially. And the conversation you were having about intervention spaces and things, those are non-capacity generating spaces. So the spaces that are used for the capacity calculations are only classrooms. So that's something to understand first. So we take all of the classroom to school and we multiply that times a, a student capacity factor for those classrooms. Typically, it's around 25. For some spaces like pre-K, it'll be 18, because we want to hire our lower student to teacher ratio. But you run through that capacity calculation, and for the Virginia Department of Education, the max capacity assumes that every classroom is completely full all day long. Well, if you've ever worked in a school or been to a school, that is not the way schools work, so. Sometimes kids are sick, sometimes you can only have 20 kids in a classroom, sometimes there are 28 kids in a classroom, depending on what your school population is that year. And then, of course, teachers need planning time and other things throughout the day. So you, you know, you don't have a seven-period day or an eight-period day where the teacher is teaching every single one of those periods. So we typically use a point eight-five utilization factor to go from max capacity to functional capacity, right? And, and those functional capacities change depending on what kind of program you're using. If you're using a block schedule, your utilization factor might be as low as point seven-five. If you're using a seven-period day, it might be point eight-five. If you're using a seven-period day, it might be point-eight-five. So we use different utilization factors to adjust to what is actually realistic for operating a school. And then, as, as Ms. Powell said, that, um, you know, schools need the ability to, to move students and teachers throughout the day to support different, uh, wide variety of programs, and so, um, operating a school at that eighty percent of functional capacity or eighty-five percent, is pretty optimal, and once you get beyond that, it starts feeling crowded, and you start having challenges with scheduling spaces in the building and things like that. Does that help?
Yeah, great, thank you. I didn't know if that was, there was like a formula or if it was custom based on this, the school, but it sounds like it's kind of both. Yeah, there's a little bit of flexibility for the formula. Okay.
Thank you.
Um, Mike?
Well, sure, well, one question to start out of curiosity. With that, that total cost estimate, you know, a hundred million dollars, you know, as you said, that would be over some number of years. What, if the city was providing somehow like ten million dollars a year for, um, facilities improvements and maintenance, just to throw a theoretical example, what, if any limitations, would you confront in terms of project management capacity or ability to find, contractors, subcontractors, construction workers, or are you not seeing that as the real binding constraint?
Uh, time is the problem. I would say that, um, getting, getting that work done within a summer is not possible. Um, so, we would have to have a way to stop people from being in that school for a long enough period of time that we could do the work. And when we're doing that, I would say it would make sense maybe to combine a couple of those packages into, I don't, wha- whatever it works out to be for an entire s- school to get everything it needs. I think that's the way to go. In terms of, um, contractors, yeah, I think this is the worst world I've ever lived through, uh, in terms of finding contractors to do work. But, again, it's advantageous to put the most in, because then you're getting a larger outfit coming to do the work, being able to do it more efficiently in that case.
And I could add in, so, so part of what we would be doing, if we did a school-by-school modernization program, what we would look at is building out a C I P, again, ten, fifteen, twenty-year time horizon that would, that would build that out both in terms of a financing plan and a construction plan. So we would, we would match that schedule over a long period of time to staffing capacity and financing capacity.
Now, I guess, um, just some quick initial thoughts. So it sounds like, you know, enrollment is projected to slightly decrease or roughly remain the same since, you know, roughly two thousand and ten, enrollment ended up being about flat. Absent enrollment, you know, there's still issues of beyond, you know, the physical student capacity, additional resources, and the spaces need there, and then maybe most important, I mean, like, most of the schools have major full HVAC replacements that regardless of enrollment, if that means to happen, that's a huge project. And, you know, I think about, you know, the General Assembly's J L A R C study, which showed statewide, Virginia has a backlog of over twenty-five billion dollars of school construction investments that are needed. Um, and in their own report, they acknowledged that the state systematically underfunds school construction, and they haven't fixed it. Uh, so we have to figure out in that context how we still try to move things forward. But it makes me think, I do think there's at least a possibility in the next several years, depending on election outcomes, we will finally have a state government that will significantly change school funding, and also finally approve, um, approving a sales tax for school construction, which did pass with bipartisan support in the legislature, but was just vetoed by the governor. In that context, I could very easily see us having ten million plus dollars a year for school construction. And, you know, I'm just curious, if we assume that case, then how do we start to plan school by school, how to do it, and kinda triage, what schools do we start at first? Cause that's kinda, that was my first reaction, to me, it seems like that may be the best way to approach it, and I do think hopefully, we're actually maybe a year or two away from that actually being our situation in terms of the state money available to us. Um, so I think, if that happens, we have to start to think like, school by school, and take on things like HVAC projects that eventually we're not gonna be able to delay anymore.
Um, Lloyd, do you have anything?
Yeah, I, the, the question I have sort of follows on what Michael was asking about. And I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what it would look like if you were to do one of these larger renovation projects on a particular school. Are you suggesting that we would be closing down that school for, for nine months? And if so, what does anybody think would happen with those students and those teachers?
Uh, ideally, yes. I do think we would close it down for that period of time. Um, because we're finding out that having students on an occupied, uh, an occupied construction site is a challenge, so uh, that would be the ideal. Uh, and the solution, I think, uh, probably has something to do with the, uh, Walker campus. And I think we'll hear a presentation about that, they'll maybe shed some light on, on that thought process, but I think there is a, a way that we could use the existing Walker campus, uh, as we develop that site as a, a landing pad for those schools.
Yeah, I'd be, you know, I'm looking for, you know, beyond, you wanna chime in as, as well. I mean, the, the numbers are, they're high, but it, it, it costs a lot, I mean, you know, I think we did something similar many years ago when I was on school board, it was like in the seventy or eighty, I mean, it's, it's not gonna get cheaper. And these are things that we have to do, we have older schools that it costs more, um, to maintain, but they're, you know, um, particularly the older ones, are really nice looking buildings. We just have to kinda figure out a way to do it with all the other needs that we have in this city. It's an old city saying. We got old pipes and stuff, we have a lot of things that we have to do, but we, I mean, we just have to, you know, we just, you know, figure out a way, I think that Michael mentioned it with, um, um, hopefully we'll get the, the, um, the tax that we can, you know, that we can target specific projects on, and you know, maybe things will slow down a little bit, we'll have capacity, but anyway, we, we'll, we just have to work through it and see how we, how we can do it.
Could, I got something, you know, question to add, so, your question for us about what you would like us to respond to, I mean, yes, we wanna like make our schools better, so what are the specific kind of points of feedback that you would like?
I mean, that's, we were looking for the, for reactions, looks like Sam has some thoughts on that as well. Uh, we were looking for reactions, we'll be back at, I mean, there's, there's, again, a couple of different ways we can go here, we can continue down the path of doing this on an annual basis. What are we able to accomplish within a summer? We can take this holistic approach to each school and start looking at this as a school-by-school basis. We also are, are, are looking for your, um, on your reaction relative to the, uh, level of intervention at the school level that, that, that people, that y'all right now, at least based on what you know about the schools, um, might have an interest in pursuing. You know, should we be really just looking at bare bones, what are the needs that need to be addressed? For the slide that, that Michael shared, or should we be looking beyond that into what do we need to do to actually modernize these school buildings?
Right, how much triage do we wanna do before we coordinatedly fix, fix it?
Yeah.
As well as just appreciating the idea that the, um, how did you refer to it, Mike? The, the baseline is a hundred million dollars. So, that's one thing, uh, to have a reaction to the sense that it would take that. And that's not perfection, that's not all school facilities being these new spaceships that land and take care of our kids.
I mean, yeah, I think given the fact that the Beaufort project was seventy, I don't think a hundred is a shock to any of us. It's just, are we spending that in three years or are we spending that in twenty years, that's all, you know? And how much of that is coming from state?
Yep.
Or, or it's going to-
So it's, it's the amount that is required, it, it will be about the sources in which we use to take care of them. And then, of course, I always remind you that that is in contrast to however many other priorities that are off the list, and how do we make them off there?
So I guess, we're not being asked to vote on anything today, because this is all eliminated.
Just looking for reaction, there, there's more, so we're gonna go ahead and shift, right? And I should point out that, uh, project cost for Beaufort is actually ninety-one million. Right. Just to keep it in context.
Um, I do also wanna just note something that, um, was mentioned at the beginning, um, which I know we've heard before, and it's cool to see theory happen in real life, where as more dense housing was built, there was a shift from where people lived, so students were able to go into the new building, and then families were able to move into the neighborhoods. And as, um, which is kind of the whole point, that's, that's the goal, having people right-size what, what their housing needs are. As, um, uh, Juan alluded to, there's the empty bedroom problem of neighborhoods that used to have whole families, now the kids have moved out, and their, their former veterans are not housing kids anymore. And there's not a shift to, uh, I'm not saying you all have to leave your family homes, but there's not that shift to right-size that scenario, because those spaces don't yet exist. You know, people don't have the, the backyard units that they can move into and then let a family live in the bigger house they used to live in, or whatever, that, that evolves still. Hopefully, things will see as our zoning code adjusts, and we see more development and infill within our city. So, all of that, like we were talking about, the housing of it all, is going to be something that we pay attention very closely, if that will affect enrollment and enrollment patterns, and also birth rates. When there's more affordable housing, people will consider free children. That's a broader nationwide issue, but is not, is not interactable, affectable, likable, affectable, I would say. But it's cool to see that that actually worked, yeah, the, the student.
I'd like to point out also, the elephant in the room as far as these numbers go. Um, these are enrollment numbers based on our current schools. When you modernize and improve a school, there are people in this community whose kids aren't enrolled in public schools. And there's a tipping point for each of those families, and when the school gets nicer, I'm not saying it's all about the buildings, but I think it's fair to say that some of it is. And when these things change, then suddenly you've got a different enrollment pattern. I'm very curious to see what happens to Charlottesville Middle School. Uh, you know, does everybody stay in private schools over time that currently is, or do they start to come back when they see this great new school building? I don't know.
So, I wanted, um, the school board to chime in, hold it there. President.
Yeah, we're good. Um, I think actually we can have the B M D O's presentation, and then it would be helpful for us to be able to respond holistically.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I would just very briefly say, just my reactions, I feel like it would make sense to begin to prepare a plan for modernizing each individual school, and then plan that thinking about it being operationalized when and if the state makes substantially more money available. The sales tax alone, I think, would be around ten million dollars annually just for school construction. But I do think it makes sense to start planning for modernization of each individual school, and looking through it, every single school required a major HVAC replacement, there's really not a choice when I see that, besides moving beyond just doing things over the summer.
Can we add in, when you get a pilot from U V A also?
Yes, but I'm, I'm more optimistic we'll get the, uh, money from the state before U V A, but.
Alright, I'm gonna hand this over, um, to Maria Beninsky. Uh, she's, uh, well, she'll introduce herself, but she's an architect at B M D O, and she's been shepherding us through our, uh, planning processes for the Walker campus and the middle, uh, the pre-K.
Right.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Uh, Mike said, I'm Maria, I've been, um, working at B M D O a very long time, and with the Charlottesville City Schools for coming up on a decade, I think, here, which is pretty wild. So, uh, the past, um, I guess, maybe four months or so, um, we've been asked to look at, um, the Walker campus. And, a kind of a dual-track, uh, study here, we've been looking at the Early Learning Center, which will house preschool classrooms for Charlottesville City Schools, very exciting. Um, and at the same time, we were asked to look at a master plan for the campus. Um, over the past six months or so, the visioning happening within the city schools and public works for the site has really been developing, and some needs have been identified, um, that potentially could be served on this site. Um, so the ask for us was to come back at our Early Learning Center design that we had worked on in, um, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two during the reconfiguration planning, and adjust it, um, as needed, um, to test out, can we fit that Early Learning Center plus a number of additional uses that I'll get into in this presentation, um, next. I guess, unless I can advance, you're advancing, okay. Um, Walker Campus, of course, located, um, at the north end of town, right by the bypass, uh, not far from Charlottesville High School, next. Um, here's a site aerial, uh, Rose Hill Drive tees into this site at the south. Gentry Lane runs along its west edge, and along its east edge is a busy road known as the two-fifty bypass. Um, and McIntyre Park is just across the bypass from the site, next. So, here are the uses that we were asked to look at, um, fitting into the Walker site. Um, some are on-site already, and some are new ideas to bring to the site. Um, next, I'm gonna go through them one by one with you. Central office, so currently there is, of course, a central division office at the north end of the site. Central office does have an issue though, where they actually can only fit about half of their staff within this office building. So the other half are in the lower level of Charlottesville High School, um, a challenge, of course, for operations, um. And there's a desire to, one day, be able to bring all the staff together, so it could be a wood building, and also to free up that space within Charlottesville High School, so it can be dedicated to epidemic use. Next. For a pool, uh, this is an existing facility in the southeast corner of the site. Um, there's a, uh, in addition to the pool itself, there's some recreational spaces, um, to use for some after-school programming, uh, at times over the years. Um, and, you know, it's an existing parks and rec asset, I think there's visioning ongoing about what the future of it should be. Um, but it is serving the community at this time, and overtime has been used, uh, occasionally by students on the Walker campus, and that could continue to be the case into the future. Next. The Early Learning Center, that's gonna be a lot of the focus of what I talked to you about this evening. Um, and we're looking at a, you know, new purpose-built home, um, for Charlottesville's youngest learners. Um, this is a really big deal, this is bringing all the preschool staff, leadership, and resources, which is, they've been spread across the six neighborhood elementaries to date, into one building that's purpose-built for young learners, whose needs and academic patterns are very different from elementary schoolers, middle schoolers, et cetera, so um, very exciting new project, next. Okay, Lugo McGinnis Academy, this is Charlottesville City Schools' alternative high school program. Um, it's currently at about the scale of thirty students and has been oversubscribed for a very long time, there've been waiting lists, and you know, there hadn't really been a, a hope that it could expand to meet the need of those waiting lists. Um, they're working on developing a night school, that still isn't going to take care of everyone on the waiting list. Um, so, when, you know, people started to brainstorm about this site, um, the existence of the gym here, uh, really opens up the possibility for Lugo McGinnis to be located here, cause they need a gymnasium, and there are other, there's other existing, uh, space on the site that they could use, existing buildings, um, without a slated use in the future. Um, so this was something that really prompted, um, the request to us to kinda re-envision, how could the site be used? Um, and not only, you know, the existing facilities, which are assets that could be used by Lugo McGinnis with the light renovation, there's also the location of Walker fairly proximate to Charlottesville High School, and also to the K-Tech, um, center, so that's seen as an asset as well. Next. And then, elementary swing space, and this came up earlier, so, um, the idea that those re- renovations, which, um, might occur at the elementary schools could be achieved much more economically, much more quickly, with much less pain, um, if an entire school is able to move out, um, to a swing space, uh, for a year, year and a half, while their building is, uh, under construction. Um, so these, this is all kind of a handful of, of different site uses that we were requested to look at. Um, next. Um, before we dig into the phasing and the different, uh, locations of those uses, uh, I'm gonna go into the early childhood, the Early Learning Center, pardon me, um, in a little bit of detail with you, next. Next, okay, so, um, we've just con- completed concept design for this, which would be the first phase of the master plan. Um, this project for the Early Learning Center is the next major investment in Charlottesville City Schools' facilities that's up- that's upcoming for our city. And, you know, the whole idea is make sure we do it in a way that allows this, all of the site potential to still unfold in the future. We're not doing something that cuts off some possibility. So the master plan is not something that's prescriptive, saying we must do all these steps. It's something where we show possibilities and as we complete each step, we make sure we're doing it in a way which does not, you know, block future developments which might be desirable. Next. And just a reminder, probably everyone's familiar, but this Early Learning Center is the completion of the reconfiguration process. It's being put in place to complete the reconfiguration that was started with the Charlottesville Middle School Project, which is gonna bring together grades six, seven and eight. On the Cherry Avenue site, elementaries will host grades K through five. And then the preschool center will, now to be called the Early Charlottesville Early Learning Center, will be the home for all of those preschool classrooms that have been spread across the six elementaries. And, you know, there's this idea that we're not just reconfiguring grades. As we do this, we're uplifting our facilities. And each time we put someone into a new space, we're making sure that that space is the best it can be to, in order to support their development, their health, teacher retention, all of those things that a good facility can do for us. Next. And Early Childhood is a pretty facility-intensive endeavor. Classrooms for this age group are larger than your typical elementary classroom. And a lot of that is because they're not reading yet and their curriculum is physical. There are a lot of different materials, equipment that are needed, curriculum that cycles through for different lessons and then needs to be put into storage because they're really learning from, you know, they're not doing paper and pencil all day. They really are learning by doing and touching and moving and building. And then they also need direct access from those classrooms to boiler rooms. That's a very big deal for logistics and also for the development of children's sense of autonomy, ability to care for themselves and do what they need to do without adult gatekeepers, you know, taking them down the hall. Next. And we believe that it's really worth the investment to create these appropriate spaces for them because, you know, these early years, three and four years old, it's a very consequential time for growth and learning for a young person and can really impact their trajectory moving through the rest of their academic career and their life. Next. The scale of the center that's being proposed for the Walker site is twenty classrooms. This allows a little bit of growth, but it's essentially maintaining the existing scope of services. It was given to us a charge, so to make sure that however we do the design, we need to be able to provide for a future expansion of about twelve classrooms. And that's so that in the future, if our operational funding were made available, we could increase the size of the three-year-old program to match the size of the four-year-old program. And that's because a two-year experience where you get to be there as a three-year-old and four-year-old is shown to have a great benefit for outcomes in a preschool. Next. Okay, so back to the Walker site where this is all happening. We've got Building A labeled here. That's the main classroom building that has a cafeteria in its lower level. Next. Building B, that's the auditorium building. It also houses classrooms for visual and performing arts. There's a functional skills classroom in there as well. Next. Building C is the gymnasium to the south there. Next. Crow Pool is in that southeast corner of the site. Next. And the central admin building is up in that north corner of the site. Next. So, starting about a year from now, all the preschool classes in Charlottesville City Schools will be taking place in Building A without much significant renovation of any kind. They're just using it as is, as a swing space while, next, the construction of the new facility occurs right next to them. So if everything stays on schedule, you know, that means about a year of design and then a couple of years of construction. And, next. In fall twenty-twenty-eight, they will start school in their new facility. And we've worked on this concept design, not only to try to stay out of the way of other site uses that you'll see in a little bit, but also to try to tackle one of the major challenges of this site, which is it really lacks outdoor play and learning space at the level of the classrooms. So we've worked hard to provide that amenity to the new building and then also actually improving the case for Building A somewhat as well. So you'll see, you know, we're entering, excuse me, the new Early Learning Center from a bus loop that's facing north there. You can see the red triangle that's pointing at the entry. So it's a front door in Gentry Road, not far from the existing Building A entry. And then there are a series of terraces. So each level of classrooms, and there are three levels, that step all the way down to that playing field level that's kind of at the center of the site. Each of those offers every classroom in the building immediate access to outdoor learning play space that's secured developmentally appropriate, you know, spaces for play and learning. It's really an outdoor classroom. Next.
One quick question, would that one have to be relocated? I'm trying to think of, for Building A to the road, is enough space there?
Yeah, so there is, there, there's a retaining wall involved basically in moving, you know.
So it's gonna be like right up to the current building? That's pretty close.
Yeah, so, yeah, actually, and if we go on, you'll be able to see the entry landscape a little bit. But essentially, there's a bunch of land on the site that is the hillside right now. And so we're suggesting that you cut into that hill to create part of that bus loop. You know, the retaining wall, I think on average, he said five or six feet tall. It's not a gigantic retaining wall. But it is, it is a big site move in order to create that appropriate entry landscape at the front door, which Building A really lacks right now as it exists. And the new building, as you probably noticed, is, a majority of it is going on the existing parking lot that's by Building A. So there are some big site moves involved to make this work and that, yes, a good, and this too, note there. So this is looking from the south at the new facility. The gym roof, you can see on the lower right of the image. Building A, a south facade that includes that opening to the cafeteria, you can see in the upper right. You see the roof terraces, I mentioned. There's a central spine of site circulation through the middle there and you can see the connector over to Building A. And that allows Building A, whoever's in there, to make use of our elevator that connects all three levels of the site. Again, that vertical movement across the site has been a big challenge. So trying to really heal that up with this project. And the project also creates a terrace, a roof terrace at the level of the cafeteria of Building A. If you've been in that cafeteria and stepped out, there's really not an outdoor space at the scale of that cafeteria room and this provides that, as well as these other site connections. Next. You can see we've matched the building levels. I didn't, I didn't tell Mike, they didn't talk out of time, but, yeah. So we have matched the new building levels to Building A so that they can make the most of the vertical circulation between the two of them. Next. And this is a front door shot of the new Early Learning Center with green signage above. So we're standing with Building A is on our left, the new bus loop is to our right, and the big hillside along Gentry. The, you know, open site circulation down through the site, you see in the slot there, we could pass under that connector to Building A. If we have time, I could check in, if you have questions on this, or I could just blow through to the master plan.
Oh, is that you, is that the last slide?
This is the end of the concept design portion and then I can lead you through the master plan.
Okay, we have about fifteen minutes, so just quickly, any questions from the concept?
Okay. All right, and the master plan will put some of this in context too. All right, so next slide, please.
I think we all agree that it looks really nice.
Yeah.
Nice.
Wonderful. We've had a lot of fun with it over the past month for sure. Okay, so how does this Early Learning Center design fit into a larger plan for the Walker site? Again, here are our site uses that I described earlier. Next. Today's picture where we're using Buildings A, B and C for Walker Upper Elementary. Admin is on the north, Crow on the lower right of the image southeast. Next. Talked about the Early Learning Center already moving into Building A as a swing space. Next. And that will be through the spring of twenty-twenty-eight. This is, this diagram represents the new Early Learning Center that we were just looking at, opening in fall of twenty-twenty-eight. That's a completion of what we're calling Phase One of the master plan. Next. And then we're saying that with a year-long project of light renovation, Building B could become the home of the Lugo McGinnis Academy. And that would give them use of the gymnasium. We're proposing that they would have outdoor recreational and learning space. As you can see, kind of in an L shape, that's that light orange to the east and to the south of the building. So really, that central courtyard that's currently in the blacktop is dedicated to younger students and they have their own space apart from that. Next. And then Phase Three here represents the use of Building A as that elementary swing space. And Building A has, I think, twenty-eight classrooms on the upper level. And so, and it's been operating as a six-hundred-student school. So any of these elementaries that we have in the city should be able to use this in a reasonable fashion for a year or a year and a half as needed. However, you'll notice that up at the north of the site, we're not seeing the admin building anymore. Bringing, you know, we've got Early Learning Center, Lugo McGinnis. When we bring this third school to the site, we're showing that you need some additional parking for the staff. And so that north end of the site, we've taken to develop that parking. And we're putting the administrative office space that's currently there into the lower level of Building A in this scenario. And this phase could last from six to ten years, you know, depending on how long it takes to get through all those renovations. So it's a long-term scenario. Next. And then finally, if it were desired, Lugo McGinnis has space to do a little bit of expansion and ideally, you would do a kind of connector piece with an elevator. And, you know, these projects could have in different orders, but there's not great access for someone in a wheelchair to Building B right now. There's an ability to build a bit of a lobby with an elevator that can get someone from that Rose Hill walking up into the site and to the different levels that exist there. And then, next. See, and so then in Phase Five, there's that expansion we talked about of the preschool center into Building A. So that connector that we built becomes an active back and forth for the preschool center. And we finally build the central admin space so that all of the staff can come together. Currently showing them in that yellow portion. They said, they said, put us last. They did, yeah.
Yeah, I'm saying.
They said, schools first. But, you know, at the scale of twelve classrooms, we don't need the whole of Building A for the preschool expansion. So the space, the built space is there and this would give central admin its own front door facing north adjacent to that parking that was developed in the prior phase. Next. So overall, you know, we've worked and believed like, that we've really shown that it's possible to accommodate multiple uses on this site. And in a sense, it's so sloped, it's almost better to have multiple small uses than be trying to span the whole site with, you know, one institution. We have reused existing buildings, so the only building demolition that's involved in this plan is that small admin building. Every other building is maintained and reused for a meaningful purpose. We've improved site circulation, provided some vehicle loops that are much needed. We've located outdoor space for students directly outside the buildings that they are in. And we, there are multiple, multiple off-ramps, which is a good phrase we got from the schools. None of these phases require that the next phase be built. So it's all possibilities, not necessities. And so, yeah, we're excited to have been able to work on this project with the schools. Next. And we're, we're at questions.
So if I could, I'd just quickly jump into just spring that, and I'm not trying to trigger anybody, but the F E I conversation that we had just a few months ago really, really caused some reimagination to be possible to happen. And that site specifically triggered a lot of, but what would we do if we got that piece of property? How could that make a difference? Losing that property, we did not lose that energy. We actually just redirected it to the Walker site. And as you see, that's where all of this has really come from. The, the focus has been on, we have talked about and this, this community has been prepared for the idea that the Crow Pool was to be demolished. That was discussed some time ago. While we still know that a decision ultimately has to be made, it was slated for demolition. This original design called for the gymnasium and the auditorium to be demolished. And we pushed back into what, what else might we be able to do based on what came out of that F E I conversation? So we're here looking at that particular slide because we were kind of given that opportunity. So I'll thank the federal government for at least triggering that part of the conversation because it really made us be a little bit more creative and I actually appreciate the moment that it calls for us because we were able to go back to the designs and say, well, what if, what, what might be possible if we did this? And that's how you have what the M D L just presented. So I just wanted to point that out to you and just say, now we gotta figure out how to pay for it, but at least we figured out what it could be.
Um, Eva Nell, you all go first.
All right. We'll have a chance to provide some pragmatic feedback to Dr. Gurley and his team based on that. So I think this conversation is gonna be more corrective, I think, with what we want council to hear from us. I don't know, it's the technology in our time, but I think one slide that I just would love us to be able to go back to is what the dollar investment early results in. And I just hope that that isn't lost. I don't have to sit in your seat and figure out exactly how to fund this. You know, our job is to advocate for our schools and our students who are also your citizens. And I think paying attention to what that dollar investment equates, one of, what did it say, seven dollars and, anyway. So, Mr. Myers, go ahead.
No, I appreciate this. I would just say, this vision looks great to me and let's go, in my mind. Sorry, Dr. Gurley, you're gonna have to wait twenty years, but maybe instead of to keep you around. No, but council colleagues, you know, I was speaking more myself, you know, I think this is ambitious vision here and again, I think a lot of us want great opportunities. And I think I heard a lot of comments from you a while earlier that we do need to modernize and we're completely in agreement there. And I know, you know, if we have to get a referendum for sales tax and this is the vision, I would be very knee-deep behind helping you all sell that and then again, walking hand in hand with you to, again, help sell to the public too. So, thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for all of this. Nice to see you, Maria.
Nice to see you.
Um, I, I guess I wanted to roll back a little bit when you were talking about Mr. Freeze, the options, or I don't know if it was you or Mike, the options of whole building renovation or upgrades and the time that it would take to do that study. Was it three to five years that I heard you all?
I'm sorry, could you say that one more time?
So I believe when you initially presented the option of looking at just doing the minimal upgrades and continuing to do just the improvement programs per site or per school as opposed to looking at doing a whole school upgrade or modernization. And I thought after, one of you said that it would take three to five years to do that cost estimate study. And is that for all of the schools? And maybe it was her.
It wouldn't take us that long. I, I think we could, I mean, I don't, I would say year minus is more the timeframe. I, I think, I don't think it would take anywhere near that long to do that kind of analysis.
For each, for each school or for all?
Well, no, to, for, I would say we should probably look at it holistically and kind of present, you know, all of them as a, as a package and then we could choose, you know, the sequencing based on need and whatever, you know, school board and council is interested in.
So at some point, I'm assuming, Mr. Sanders and Dr. Gurley, you're looking for some guidance from school board and then council. You all are listening to us as far as which direction we would like to go, right?
Absolutely. So I think once that assessment is done, you know, I mean, of course, the, the funding part, you know, will be the bigger issue, but I think we do as a school division. But I think we do, as a school division, we will need to prioritize, like, what's, what's urgent? And then make that recommendation to the city.
To the city.
I agree with that. We, we would always want to hear the recommendation from schools. And that in itself becomes an important piece for us to then try to factor in, what are the choices, what are the options? As I continue to say to council, I'm here to frame it. And then they have to tell me which way we're gonna go. And then we'll do it. And I think that's really why it was important for us to make sure that this conversation happened now, leading into this retreat that they're gonna have. Because they have the big-ticket items to discuss. And then to really just figure out how hard are we pulling each of these levers? Because each one of them has a lot of money attached to them. And it may be that we could get them all done, just in different degrees or different schedules. I think that's really what we're trying to get to. So I wouldn't say we're looking for an answer or a direction just yet. It really is about reaction to what you're seeing and hearing. And is it the right direction that you want to go in? Does it check the boxes that you had to prioritize when you made the decision to serve this capacity?
Yeah, and I guess I'm, I'm curious, and I know that we have another CIP meeting in June, next month, I believe. But in looking at some of the work that, that is slated to be down specifically, like the amount of money to upgrade HVAC systems, it's a lot of money, right? And if we're gonna do that, and then still consider doing something more, upgrading or modernizing individual schools, I mean, at what point or what, you know? I mean, this is a conversation, obviously, that we all need to continue to have. Which direction do we want ahead? And I think about the middle school, state-of-the-art, beautiful building. Soon, and we're rolling into our Early Learning Center, which I know will be state-of-the-art, you know, as far as, and it's so important to start out with those littles. But I think our students in between those two spots deserve the same thing. And, and there's so much more that we can do for those students as far as state-of-the-art learning. You know, just the quality of the educational spaces. So that's kind of where I'm leaning, is look, looking to tackle those buildings and not just put band-aids on them. Nice data. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders and Dr. Gurley, I appreciate you bringing this to the forefront. You know, at least in my time, we have not had a substantive, serious conversation about this. And so, I appreciate you bringing it forth. And look forward to speaking with my colleagues and better understanding what we would look for for our students in the division. I do just want to draw some correlation here when we talk in our community about what our priorities are in the spaces of public housing and affordable housing and services and refurbishing our jail and putting money into that, that this really is about how we start a conversation about education. And if we don't get that right, and we don't afford our children the opportunity to learn in a safe environment with, you know, modern facilities and teachers that are proud to be in our district, then I think that's where we get the trickle-down effect of not being able to provide those services. And so I'm happy that we're having that conversation. And hopefully, one mitigates the other when we start to do that in our schools and in our facilities. So I appreciate the conversation. Thank you.
So looking...
Wait, hello, I have something to say. Thank you, okay? Yeah, um, yes, well, welcome back, everybody. Um, I do want to say that I believe that these improvements will impact our students' learning experiences. And I'm truly excited to see the new designs come to life. That's it, have a great day.
Um, so, um, I think that, for council, I think that looking at the time, do we have a call session?
Yes, but it's short, so that's your call.
So I guess we have, I guess, maybe another 15 minutes if you want to chat.
Um, I have just two questions. One is, you had mentioned that about half the admin staff are at CHS, well, half are at Walker. And one of the things that Mr. Goddard pointed out was how big CHS is. I double-checked the numbers for capacity, and CHS is pushing capacity the most out of all the schools. But yet also is, is there, was the conversation ever had about moving admin to CHS since it has more space? Or we need that for, for the high schoolers and classrooms?
There's no space to move admin to CHS. I mean, we would be moving, right now, we refer to the bottom of the, of CHS as the annex. So we would move staff out. And that would give us a little bit of room. But there's definitely not enough space to move the entire central administration to CHS.
And that space would be able to be repurposed for capacitations for students?
Yeah, it would, it would give us a little bit, a little bit of room. But I always remind Mr. Sanders that, um, it's not exactly, uh, it's, it's, it's not exactly what we would need to build something state-of-the-art for our students. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then, um, for, how does transportation work? If we're consolidating pre-K to one building? And are the littles good to ride the buses? Do they do that now? How does, how do we collect them? Do we have enough bus drivers for that? What is the, how does that work? Since it moves them from their neighborhoods to one central location?
So they would, they continue to receive bus service as they do now. Now they ride the bus with their elementary peers. And we have already, based on our current number of drivers, which we still need more drivers hiring always. But, um, right now, what we would be looking at doing is running, we need to move the preschool transportation basically onto what we call the middle school tier. We run transportation in three tiers. So basically, the bus, a single bus driver will go out and do an elementary route. Then they'll do a Walker Beaufort or middle route, and then they'll do a high school route. And so what we're gonna need to do is move the preschool timing right now would have to go on that middle school tier. And that's the way we're seeing that come together.
And where, where would the middle school tier move?
So it, it falls in between, basically, the way the buses are scheduled. It, it really defines the start times for the schools. But, um, right now, our elementary schools start around 7:30, the middle school starts around 8:00, and the high school's on a 9 o'clock. And so basically, we would be taking the preschool, the, the new Early Learning Center would have a start time that would, it would by necessity right now, based on our number of drivers, need to fall on that middle tier. Because we do need to provide bus service.
As, as a former CHS student, I strongly recommend we keep CHS at 9:00 and go earlier. Thank you.
Michael, did you have anything with one for chime in, Michael?
Yeah, and I'd, uh, I, I appreciate when life happens, you have to keep moving on. And I appreciate that the FEI situation helped trigger these thoughts. Because I do think this is a significant opportunity to seriously plan for system-wide modernization. It does still make me think the fact that UVA taking FEI, you know, increases the cost of doing this, as well as took that property off the tax rules when UVA already avoids paying over $20 million annually in taxes, which alone would pay for this entire plan. But that aside, um, I would say, my reaction is still, to me, this seems like a really exciting opportunity. It would seem to make sense to plan for modernizing all the schools. I don't know if that's done on a school-by-school case, or if it makes more sense to do that system-wide. And then we decide, you know, which ones we prioritize. I do think it makes a lot of sense to move into doing that with the caveat that it's probably only feasible to begin operationalizing it, funding it, once the state allows us to get some additional money for school construction.
Uh, just, the, the obvious fact is that if we get the, the right to have a 1% sales tax to finance school construction, at the current figures, that's about $13 million a year. And that would enable this plan to work, basically. And if it doesn't, we would have, the only way to do it would be, unless we're gonna cut $13 million from other parts of the budget, is to raise taxes by effectively about 10 or 11 cents under the state rate. Which I think is, is gonna be politically inconvenient for the public. So, uh, we've got at least, the, the three things we're gonna be talking about in the, in the retreat. Housing is something we've made a $10 million a year commitment to. Here, we're talking about another 10-plus million dollars a year. And if we're gonna do transit, that's gonna be probably another $10 million a year. We don't really have actually $30 million, $20 million at the moment. So, kind of, we're gonna have some difficult issues that to confront, particularly if we don't get the ability to impose that satisfaction.
Uh, and I'll just chime in that I'm impressed by the work, the detail that the MDL did. You know, that you can do one, things get kind of hairy, you could, you don't have to, it's not dependent on that. The other one, uh, you know, the next projects, I'm really impressed with the thoughtfulness that went in, went into it. Been trying to get some admin spaces for a long time, so, it looks like if, you know, everything works out, and we'll have some way to beat down a little bit. But really impressed with the work that is done. So I'm thankful for the partnership.
One small question, sorry, not that small, actually. Are there any legal constraints about why we couldn't also build housing on top of schools? Or allow housing to be built, not necessarily...
Do you mean by get that site there, or just in general?
In gen, I mean, we've got a lot of school building projects coming up. What if they were at the bottom, a couple floors of a tall apartment complex full of teachers and... And I think that's, yeah, I mean, I, not to bring FEI up again, but I'll bring it up. There was, like, housing conversations about the FEI space. They had, I mean, it was a hotel, right? And so, a conference center. And so I think how we can have that kind of conversation about how we potentially incorporate housing for our teachers as part of their benefit structure, um, I think that's a fair conversation to have as well. Or just acknowledging that these are big plots of land scattered nicely throughout the city that have a lot of vertical space that is not being utilized. What does that look like? And is, when is the time to incorporate that thought process?
Any...
I'll just say that we have talked about it, so is it lost on us? I'll take them off the hook, come on. I guess just following up on that point really quick. If we fund that the formerly Summit, I forgot, excuse me. Formerly called Mail Summit, I had it right, I had it right. Um, if that site is not working for us, maybe that's a consideration as well as housing, turning it from school to housing.
Nice.
I just, yeah, this is a big project. I was at the beginning of kind of the conversations with it. And I don't want to think of this in five years, when maybe it's something that could be good.
It is something I know that has come up in Alexandria. We've seen conversations about... Do you mind talking to Michael and the person?
I, I know that's been explored in Alexandria. We've seen with the Minnie Howard project. I, I will say, you know, from what I know architecturally, it will make the school construction more expensive. Separating the occupancies and increasing the project size to, basically, the bigger you build your building, the longer it has to last in a fire so people can get out. So you end up paying for more fire-resistant construction than you would for a smaller school. You know, of course, that's ignoring the cost of land, which is very significant. I, I do think, you know, just off the cuff, with the rezoning, we, um, basically, a, a school needs a big site. And housing can happen on a smaller site. So I know there's the idea that so much of our land has been locked up in single-family homes on sites. And, um, I, I think it's pretty interesting to, to look at a multi-use site like that for a school. But I think we've just started to unlock all of this very low-rise development land for housing. So it, it makes sense to equally kind of scrutinize, are there ways to build smaller-scale solutions where we're densifying at the scale of duplex, quadplex, things like that, which will be just per square foot of construction cost? Those are going to be more affordable housing projects to build them. You know, the larger scale that increases the complexity.
Yes, and I, I think they're not mutually exclusive, like, that is all happening.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and in theory, we're building the school portion, and someone else is providing dollars to build the rest of it. We're giving them access to the space, and there's some kind of landless agreement or whatever, where we are not paying for the construction of the housing. So if, you know, the added costs of, you know, extra foundation or something is maybe a shared thing. You know, I don't know how that partnership would work, or how that's been done. And you said Alexandria?
Uh, I know that we looked at some studies that were going on there. I don't know if they actually achieved the mixed use there. But it was being proposed as something that was supposed to be explored on the site for a new, uh, high school facility. So it, it is something that people are looking at certainly in dense areas.
Could be worth exploring, I think.
We're gonna have to get ready to wrap up the...
Sure, so just, um, thank you for putting this together. To both of you and all of the folks that work for our school system in the city. Uh, we appreciate council's interest in this ongoing conversation. Uh, I think Mr. Meyer alluded to this, that he said if you can help in advocating to the state and leading up into November to increase state funding for our schools, we are more than happy to do so and would look forward to that work. I would just say, regardless of the outcome of the election in November, we have projects in our schools that have to happen. Uh, and so we look forward to hearing more after your retreat that's upcoming. Uh, and with that, I will call the school board, we're just gonna make this meeting.
Good. Um, and, and likewise, I think this sets us up for, um, some great discussion for, um, um, the 15th. And so now, um, will you read us in the call session, Michael?
Jumping ahead on the topic, nice emotion. Pursuant to Section 2.2/3712 of the Virginia Code, I note that the City Council closed this open meeting and convene in a closed session authorized by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as follows. Pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2/37, 3711A1, for discussion and consideration of prospective candidates to be appointed to the following boards and/or committees, the Police Civilian Oversight Board and the Planning Commission.
Okay, so moved.
Okay, all of you approve, say yes?
Yes.
Okay, we'll come back at 6:30, thank you.